So we have an amendment to the regular agenda. Deb is not here, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to point District Clerk to attempt to up the agenda. Can I get a motion? Second? All favor? Alright. Now I need a motion to accept President Johnson. Second? All favor? Public comment? Ryan? How's everything going in the topic? Alright, we lost the score number. Everything going good so far? Alright. Board comment? Anybody have anything?
Uh, 17 lines. It did make me a line for all of this. I think so.
I'm not positive down the line, but one of the things we have to discuss is board we've always sent somebody to the NISBA conference with a yearly conference. Further as well, what happens at that conference is we go to kind of delegate, represent that in a book. It's kind of good to know just that it may be down on the agenda further.
It's actually on October 12th, when we're going to decide about resolutions and who the delegate is.
So I'll be reaching out and we'll discuss this further and it might be down in there. I just thought you were supposed to talk about it a meeting before and that stuff. If that is a little bit, that's the time to go down through. Alright, notebook. Matt, hello, how are you?
Hi.
Any board comment, what's your word right now?
Yeah.
Superintendent's report.
Sure, I'll check. Mr. President? I'm going to switch over for those online to my PowerPoint. We have a couple of agenda items under the superintendent's report tonight. The first part, I'm just gonna start off with just a little brief overview on the opening of the school. I'm just gonna do a few comments in terms of a regular agenda item that we have. The fiscal update to let us know where the status of the state budget and the effect on public schools will be. We're gonna have an update on the Capitol project. We have some guests joining us remotely in terms of an alternate that we believe we can now facilitate. And then we have John Bradley here tonight, our athletic director, just give you a brief overview of the fall sports season and what we're doing with athletics this school year. So, as you know, we've been talking about this since early August, the reopening of schools. As you know from my report to the board on August 25th, Chad came up with a custom opening week schedule. Many of you have seen this grid. We have now gone through the first week of the schedule, which was the first four days of school. If you recall, we moved all four of our superintendent's conference days, we front-ended them, and last week we aimed through the 11th. We had a tremendous amount of professional developments for our staff to better prepare them for remote learning this school year and hybrid learning as well. We are now in week two, the week of September 14th. These two weeks, the 14th and the 25th, the 14th through the 28th, I believe, I'm sorry, the 14th through the 25th. We are virtually all remote for these, with the exception of our kindergarten students who are coming in Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week for screening, and they'll be starting full-time on Thursday, with the exception of our special education students who are back on campus effective this past Monday. And then next week on Monday, our preschool students start. The following week on the 28th, beginning on that Monday, and it varies by day of week, we start bringing back a grade level for building effectively. And we start transitioning our students back to those, transitioning those students who selected in-person instruction, we start transitioning them back to campus. And then the following week, October 5th, really effectively begins the first week where everyone will be in the modality that they selected. So for instance, if a parent or parents selected full remote, that's their students would remain full remote. If there's K sticks, the students will come Monday through Friday, and then 7 through 12 on a hybrid schedule based on the last, your last meeting. So that was kind of just how we decided to start the school year off. In addition to that, and I'll be going a little bit more about the numbers, we have provided what we're calling learning support. So for these stats for this week and next, where parents are home with their children or could not be home with their children, we've provided the opportunity to have child supervision. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And we reported to you in the past that we have a daily self-screening health check that's operational. It'll be operational for all the students effective the 28th when they come back. I think we're testing with those students who are on campus this week. All staff are currently participating in the survey. Approximately 2:00 AM in the morning, a email comes in, and you have to answer the four questions that most of you are familiar with. And if you answer them all no, you're good to go, you submit it, and no issue. If you don't, if you answer yes to a single question or don't answer the survey, that kind of sets already a five for us, and we take the appropriate action, which might mean to ask the staff members to stay at home or to perform the health check when they get on-site, which we're doing with some of them. I can answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Just a couple, I did some walkarounds last couple of days. Today, yesterday and today, as I mentioned, we have kindergarten screenings going on. This is the image on the right. I was just coming back to my office from a visit to high school this morning, and kindergarten students were being dismissed, and I caught this little guy in the hallway, and I said, "Did you have a good day today?" And unprompted, he gave me a thumbs up. I said, "Oh, wait a minute, let me grab my phone, do that again." And so this little man was here today for his screening. And then the picture on the left, if you saw or follow our Facebook, you know, we're trying to keep as much normal this year as we can. Adam sent out a call for first-day photos, so despite the fact that students weren't necessarily coming to campus yet, they didn't mean that it wasn't their first day of learning. So parents graciously sent in a number of photos of their children on technically what their first day of school, first day of learning was, so that was great. A couple other images from those photos of the first day of learning, little differences here than most. We have a couple of our students who are at home, learning remotely. And last but not least, in one of my visits today, I happened to pop in on Sean Caldwell, and he was doing, he was conducting a physics course, a physics lesson. And I said, "Boy, what a difference of what physics class looks like this year than in Boston." I briefly spoke just a few moments ago about our learning support. Just to give you some context, we have about 45 students on average taking advantage of that each day. That is, that takes place in our library and in our cafeteria at M E D. I want to shout out the teaching assistants and the classroom aides who are providing that supervision. And, you know, just to reiterate, these are students who, whose parents needed a little help for supervision. They either, they drop them off in the morning, and we made it so flexible that you could take advantage of whatever hours in a given day or whatever days in a given week that you need, drop your students off, and we will take good care of them, support them in their online learning, we'll make sure they get a nutritious lunch, and we'll give them some recess and activities as well. That's going really well. Kristin took this photo, I think, today, and she's very pleased with the outcome. I've answered a few questions from beyond the last couple of weeks, just kind of a reminder, we've started out very conservatively. We are a district who has supported mask use minimally, whether they're on the bus, whether they're in the buildings, whether they're in the class, even if you're socially distanced in the class, and then we're providing students with mask breaks on a regular schedule. It's not uncommon for the first few days to hear Kristin come over the public address system and say, "It's time for a small break." So we understand that some parents may feel that that's a little too conservative, but again, we want to keep the students healthy, we want to come here, we want to keep them learning. And I know Andy's on the call too, but we, a couple of months ago, Questar and Trivose did a, some of a small, kind of a scientific study by, have any of you seen the product advertised on TV called Microban? It's basically a product that when you spray it on, it helps promote, it reduces the bacteria and virus, viruses that attach to the surface. They did a controlled study with a local school district by having buses that participated in the summer program at a local district, and they sprayed the buses down, and they measured the level of bacteria that grew on the buses that were treated versus the buses that were treated. And just to kind of validate the manufacturer's claim that this would help in terms of keeping down the viral load on surfaces. Many of the districts locally are taking advantage of this program. The company comes in to be able to certify its use. The company comes in and does an application. We were having several areas done in addition to our buses, which are done on a weekly, monthly or weekly basis? Application, yeah.
Every, they last three months.
They last three months, okay, okay. It's less between 60 and 90 days. The company comes in, and we've also had them do bean entrances, bathrooms, nurses' offices, the isolation rooms as well. And we're hoping that all these strategies potentially help us attack or keep the virus, viral load down. So that was just kind of something that you had not really heard about up until now. Something that you have been talking on today, we're really excited that the USDA has now extended the, what was like the community pillar of the community eligibility plan, which means that all students, yes, I said all, are eligible for free breakfast and lunch until further notice. Now, we don't know how long that'll last. It's being done to assist families who are having some difficulty through the months of the COVID crisis, and I'm sure at some point they will modify it. But right now, our families are eligible. I will tell you that, I just got a text from Barb moments ago, within a few minutes of sending these notes out on Facebook and through school messenger, she had six phone calls and a couple emails for students who are interested in more information and to make sure they understood what, how the program was running. So that's really great news. Let's see, remote learning, just to update you on some numbers, just a couple more slides here. We're covering still around that 24, 25% district-wide. You can see by the slide here, hopefully you can see it, we have about 109 out of 305 students at M E D that have selected full remote. And the percentage is at the middle school, 25%, I'm sorry, the middle school, 25%, high school, 23%. And remember that this is a commitment that goes through the first trimester at M E D, which takes us to about December 3rd, and the first quarter at middle school, high school. Parents who want to remain in that modality, do not have to do anything. Parents who may want to switch, they're either full remote and want to come in person or vice versa, will do so approximately two weeks before those deadlines. And this is just a breakdown, it's hard to see from where you are, but a breakdown like Ray's number. It's, there's a couple, the 4th grade is kind of high, but the rest of the grades are pretty, actually 4th grade and the 11th grade are a little low, 11th grade is low, 4th grade is high, but the rest are, the rest of the areas. I can, and then I just have to fix the zoom piece. So let me do this. That's okay, we can, yeah, there we go. How's that? For those people at home, bear with me. There we go, a little better? Still an eye chart for those of you in the background, so. Matt, if you can read that, you don't have to put your ear in the chat. Okay. An update on homeschooled students, as you know, many parents have chosen this year to homeschool their students. I will say that I've talked to several, and many have said, "Once this is over, they'll reevaluate it," but for now, we feel comfortable in doing this. Some have entered into learning paths and all sorts of creative strategies. But I wanted to just kind of point out that when I last reported to you, we had 52 families or a total of 86 students. As of today, that's creeping up. We now have 56 families and 104 students. And we're tran, our assistant principal who heads up that program is quite busy these days. And that's it, just a quick shout-out to the M E D P T O, who saw the Facebook post on day one. I believe it's the P T O, and their volunteer who came the night before school started, and some nice inspirational words on the front walkway of M E D, and I know that was very well received. So at this point, that's my just kind of tip-off, the Indian update is what's going on. Of course, unlike other districts, the students started in person last week, but this week, we've had very few students on campus, and we stand by that decision, but we also know that when the 20th rolls around, we should have some challenges in terms of working through different logistical challenges that we work through with other districts. Any questions in terms of the opening? Yeah, Matt? Yes, so, Mike, help me out if I'm not gonna get this totally correct. So, in the weeks that we're doing remote instruction, because we have very few students on campus, they just need to go to the cafeteria for the food, correct? I have it on the, you know, I'm.
They need to pick, they need to pick up.
They need to pick up, okay.
Well, you don't have to opt-in, it's free for everyone. Anyone that goes to lunch, we have a free meal, you don't have to opt-in, and so all meals are free. So when you're here, you go on to the lunch table, it's a pay, but everyone needs to free. I think, right now, I think they're saying until December, and then I gotta see, we're gonna see. And then we'll see, they renewed this from the spring, we had it in spring, and then now this is renewed, but no one's on campus this spring. So we delivered it to anyone that wanted meals. We had some of the other people on campus, but right now, the only ones that's on campus that would go to lunch are free.
So from the perspective of a student, they had an internet in the back of their, the base, we want to go around, and that's going to be on the block.
Right, Chris, a bunch of them, both of them. Obviously, sex, except for the.
Yeah, I think you're interested in using my knowledge, how, 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 interested in A D.
There is gonna be some, because we do have the 7th, 7th through 12th graders who will be on their, on a hybrid, they'll only be here every other day. We do have, we do have them reaching out to Barb and letting them know, letting us know on the day that they're not here that you would like arrangements to pick up, to have the food at M E D. So we've got a little bit of coordination on it, but it's free to everyone, so there's no, you know, in terms of like chain or picking out everybody, it doesn't matter, you know, whoever you're free with, or you're taking advantage of the program, it's not a good line. It is what we serve on that day though, so it doesn't include on-the-part items or anything like that, it's the lunch that's on the menu for that day.
Hey, how are those, they, during the cafeteria?
So right now, what I believe we're gonna do with the students' return is that M E D will be delivered to the classroom. That's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, but now we're gonna have to, previously, it would have been those who ordered lunch or received free and choose. Now it'd be, we're gonna have to figure out who's, who would like lunch, right? So that, you know, we do still want to manage ways. And then at, at the middle school and high school, I understand that with the people that we have in person, we can properly socially distance those who are eating at any given lunch period in those cafeterias. So I've verified, but I'm pretty sure the last plan we had was that they're gonna be eating in the cafeteria over the, over the previous.
So you got an email this afternoon, and one of the things it says, "Curb-side pickup is available Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM to 12:15 PM from September 14th through October 2nd, 2020, at the Hitz." So, I mean, but we all have this, I believe we sent it out now.
Yeah, I can't believe the board, I think they're a major thing.
In terms of consumption numbers, are we gonna be able to strap the, for, like, see?
Yes, Barb has to keep granular track of all this because the way it's reported to the USDA, we'll have to have it by, perhaps be aggregated by student, by grade level. That's all, that's all the type of information, but we keep it on the back end. Any other questions? Okay, before we go, we go to our invited guests, just a quick update for Mr. Chadi. I don't know if your microphone's on, is that a, yeah.
Okay, so, just wanted to make a quick, quick financial update. Last week, I talked about a possible 20% reduction in state aid, and you know, the big change was it was looking at, it was likely to be on a total state aid. So as of now, for the 1920s, last year's month, I was talking about we're gathering our special education access cost aid of $32,000, they held 20% back. Our general aid was held $671 back since we received both of them, and we were best aware of the deficit, that was a lot of money. But our BOC's aid actually came in at a 20% reduction of $62,000 now. So for 1920, 21, we have $95,000 held back so far. And if this trend continues, our total CD that's set at $28 million this year would be another $1.256 million. So Chad, I don't think all districts are looking at, you know, major, major short calls and rather, and on the positive side, we rely more on taxes than state aid, you know, 30% roughly state, so we're getting hit with the districts that are the other way to get 70% state aid, that's why you can treat them up, they're getting massive cuts. They rely so much heavily, heavily on state aid. For example, I'm talking about one home $6,000, and four districts, they're gonna run $500 debt. So I still have hope, I still believe that there's gonna be some federal money, otherwise a bloody school not gonna be able to make it very long. We can get through a year or two with this. I did send out an all-of-state email, not a session sending staff, we're going through every purchase now, helping safely, obviously you're done with that, and they can probably get back. They're hoping, Questar and Trivose are gonna have a weekly meeting of state aid plan, they're hoping end of September, the division budget's gonna get more guidance. Are these cuts gonna be temporary or permanent, or what's gonna be, you know, what are the formulas that they're gonna put in place? We're still assuming these 20% could change. They could look at the four districts, they can't get, you know, that'd be way too much money, they might shift the formula. So I'm hoping at the end of September, we get some more guidance. The cuts do become permanent, and we're gonna be more of a, obviously, you know, really a spending increase, only pretty much help safety, we probably won't do anything else. We're looking, like I said, at a major amount of deficit. So it really depends on federal money coming to you at state, or I think change in the variety and help the schools out, so. Hopefully, end of September, we'll get a better update, I'll be monitoring this, I'll be updating this probably at every meeting or every other meeting with the board. This'll be a big discussion this year. As I stated, last year, we closed a lot of spending from March on, all those four months, so we get bad funding, we go through that reality. For, for this year, because of that, we put money away to handle this, and we handle one kind of year, then obviously the budget's gonna be difficult. That's where we stand. We have another quick update on FEMA. FEMA is providing, you know, there's house reimbursement, I've been checking on the COVID expenses, really for the T P E masks, our clean products, those are the things that we could put in and reimburse it for. We've spent roughly $80,000, so the money I made last meeting is gone. I've, there's a budget transfer for $170,000. We're moving it from a couple of codes, that we have some contingent funding. Sounds like FEMA's gonna stop today, the last day that they're gonna probably reimburse money from, from March or January to now, that I think they're gonna get out of reimbursing, sounds like they're gonna stop reimbursing anything after this, they said they don't have money, they had some close disasters, some storms down south, and they said they can't continue to fund this. It is $100,000, I knew that this was gonna draw it forever, but everyone applying for this decision, they're safe. So I've kept track of all the expenses, and then we put our own in, as I said, through today. They're actually gonna watch, if you put in a huge run in today, they're gonna, we're not gonna allow them to do this till next quarter. We're pretty good on that, I did move money, we'll see where we go with the rest of the year. If we do spend that, yeah, we spent $70,000, if we do spend over $130,000, consider to make a project, more, more, each other providing another quick payment. See if I, you know, I'm thinking where we'd be in that range, let's see where we go, but I'm gonna continue to track after that, and obviously, if we can get any money possible. Even typically reimbursing yourself from element costs. But they're looking at all those costs, some people are trying to put in this learning option, they're really being, it's really the masks, the T P E and the distance factor, that's what they're looking for, nothing else. So we'll see where that goes. So those are the two updates I have on the front.
So then, 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 any other questions to mark on the, on the, on the, Matt?
Uh, we have, we have, that would be all continued money?
Yes, that's correct. We always think, we always keep continued money in the health insurance fund, I need some money, and if we have to, we're gonna start using, actually, we're gonna start using some of our other, other, uh, other signed fund belts, that is very, we're charging those, it'll be an interesting year, you know, especially if you're, if I need to use some of the reserves or anything, we can, we can offset it.
No, would you like to, please, ask the other one, I talked about project, I think?
Yeah, so we're finishing up our Capitol project, on track, just a couple of small items to finish up. I have, Dave Valerie is going to be speaking, I have Mets tools, I think, that have on hand from I C I, they go to collegeers. To get a little light up, we had enough money in the budget, if they have an under-budget, then we can do that storage shed for political. If they go in and change orders, those are on the agenda tonight, but I want to, Dave Valerie, kind of go through, discuss kind of that process with all of you. So Dave, can you hear me, Dave?
Yes, I can, you're a little garbled, but I think I got the gist of it. Yeah, last, when we last spoke, we had talked about there was a real desire to do the, the storage building, which was built, bid originally as an alternate, alternate eight, you know, a couple of years ago now. And it was just too close at the time with the way the bids came in and with the, with the budget and what we were forecasting, we were a little uncomfortable at the time in, in, in accepting the bid. And, but now that we've gone pretty much through the project, as Mike, as Mike said, we're just finishing up some details, but we've, we're to a point now where we're comfortable in making that decision. And we had mentioned that at our, the last meeting that we were at, that we were going to be making a recommendation, and we have made a recommendation to the district that we do have the budget, it's good news, we have the budget to, to move forward on the storage building. And also, just as important, we have the time. We're anticipating a construction completion in, in the end of November, early December. I know we have to have everything completed and in place for Mike so he can submit it to the state in, in December, but it's good news. So I, I think, I, I think I'm okay to say this, we have three change orders that are being considered by you folks tonight to execute the storage building. One is for the general trades work, and one is for the, the site, the site work, and one is for the electrical work. There's really, there's no plumbing or no HVAC in the building, so really, it's, it's a, it's basically an outdoor storage shed, a large outdoor storage shed. So really, the, the only trades are really general trade site and electrical, because there is an electrical feed out there for lighting and some convenience outlets. We do need to move on it quickly if we're going to move forward. We need to start the process of getting what we call submittals in and getting them reviewed and approved. There are a few long lead, lead time items that we need to get in the hopper quickly. And so I think if we make a decision soon, hopefully tonight. And so I think if we make a decision soon, uh hopefully tonight, we'll be able to uh, you know, to to get this in for you this fall. Mike, I I don't, I I don't know if I need to expand on anything more, or if that's a good overview.
That's good, let's open up a question.
Would have any questions in terms of?
That? I'm never waiting to talk to you here, but uh any news about relegating?
This is the building, you know, the state cutting back on many of the resources, uh these days, within.
So this year's aid for building aid, we might have possible twenty percent for slip over. Uh that project going, you know, that project obviously we made out in the future, so I don't know if this would be a risk to pull back on something this way. Uh you know, our our A ratios are as we are changing, project already listed, but we, those are set, those can't change. So you know, obviously, any of these, any of these projects, this is a small piece of the nine twenty seven million, this is three hundred dollars, this is gonna be, I'm building aid, this is gonna, you know, this doesn't have too much of a twenty million.
What what happens to um unspent boxes if they cut that down about that?
So if they're unspent, we have to apply those to pay down the debt over time. So we have to pay back anything, so in this example, we're not spending every dollar, we're not cutting it to the exact dollar. We will have some, not a lot, if we do the personal, some months, somebody in overtime, they'll pay that down part time.
That that always works, that's a difference.
Yeah.
As a one time?
No, we can pay it, you you typically you pay it over pieces, you don't want a one time pop your budget, you can spread it over.
About seven or questions, we're not sure. We're working on that project. You heard?
It's building.
You hear that? Let's get this noise off.
There's no motion DVD for Andy's office or anything. Um I just wanna thank, we we said this last time, but um Sturger agrees with the efforts and the professionalism of everyone in the office, or. From that school, that monique, I wrote down, and um Dave Valerie, and I know they incorporated the uh these cuts along my um, I thanks to him as well, telling him, we really appreciate what you've done for the district, so, thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure, great people to work with.
And if you have other questions, we'll give you back your e-mails, thank you. And then we're gonna move to my last item.
Thank you.
Thank you, um we're gonna invite Jariah. All right, I hope you're good, just we've been doing a lot, I'm gonna share some updates with you, um the governor is um giving the gray money, there's some sports to start and follow, do you think you can bring it up in terms of. The timeframe and the sports that we can actually start, and other things that are still in the hopper, um decided in the next few days.
All right, so. Okay, so three decades, I was gonna say. Whether that you feel okay to be involved with uh schools or how to be building athletics, but the state, this is a, maybe a thing of presence, uh A and B guidelines. What that's gonna look like, so initially, initially, basically, they both started off on the fourth, honestly, they pushed that back, September forty first. Next Monday. Really looking back, because there was no opportunity to really call season trades, so, if they did, it would give us more time to figure out what we fall behind, check them down, uh ten minutes, uh there you are. So they decided to move forward. They know they put category to the high risk, checked all the ball scores, then football. Stoppers, volleyball, cross country, tennis, cheer. So they break those those goals down into high risk, minor risk sports. So you took the high risk sports, which is included football. Volleyball. I'm assuming that they put higher risk volleyball in the, in the rules. And cheer, because I would assume cheer is something will be up. They put soccer, cross country. Tennis and golf as the model of the loads. Last Friday, the state came out specifically, organized a gathering specifically athletics, about regulations for those sports that are involved. Along with that, the state decided to push volleyball, cheer, football to March first, in the spring. So they're breaking, picking that spring season, if you push the spring season back, allowing March first to end of April, those three sports, opportunities for those kids. They move forward with a lot of the sports this fall. So we were kind of looking up about that scenario until official came out, because at first, we came out with a section to decide if we want to put them all under that, but right now. We got why they're close, we don't think about that, so they're about practice, it's a limited practice situation, if you will find that. But they would know, set time for kids, know that the beach, we didn't know, sticking to know, organic, so we're part of like, okay, kids have home practice, they don't know where they're going for the team. Until the state makes that decision for them. So we'll find out, we're all good, we'll walk through this, what it would look like, I'm listening to that, so, probably say something that's made up. Um across state. What does that look like for last, as far as athletics, down. We had a soccer, golf, tennis, and cross country, which is going to be a fun appointment. Signups are open, numbers look a bit rare right now, as far as, you know, the summer data, I'll probably be going locally, so it's a Tuesday, but we're gonna be okay. Um meeting with coaches tomorrow after school, both three hours, our extra takes in balance. What does the season look like as a league, I mean, that's not, I have two major A A D, uh sorry, from a collective leaders, teachers. The team don't weigh, what's it look like, because here, time is very similar, thousands of teachers, so it's not a particular confusion. That will be the finalized Thursday, regarding the opportunities. So again, it's it's a little different, uh sorry, uh not being specific, we talk about whether. We did, you know, when you can review, or the spectator, things like that, but it could be looking. The season schedule, it's a typical game of season, probably between sixteen games plus whole season. The game, they got reduced to seven games. So the focus is, and I'm trying to go to the general, is that let's get these kids an opportunity to play, especially in the team, you see where this is going, I'm gonna pick up opportunities. In fact, Jack, that's very, you know, the whole team is shut, our system is shut down, all those teams off those six. So we can actually, if we need, if we want track, they need to be tennis, they need to be baseball, softball, and they need seniors. So like, okay, all the stuff they got, we lost that opportunity, so the target, our kids to the beast, again. Take advantage of one or two of them. Um. Over to that, the modified scenario, we're talking tomorrow, and if we get there, because, you know, we're gonna make a decision, hopefully, about, probably, we're not, but we're gonna. But like, right now, we are more on the positive two, least, or one or one modified source, the rest are obviously sexually safe not to. So we're gonna find out a lot of the runner run, if we don't run, there's good chance they miss that hard first, get a line, try to fight the hard first, so. Okay. But that's all, it's easy to get that explanation out. The um. Over to that. That's about where we are at this date. We'll see what uh, I'm very confident that we can complete the saving. Um one of those here, they can talk about, even today, um they, about what we can do to help. Maybe it's like a city outside or out there, the town, you have a table, and part of the game, sign in. The tranquilization, it's something that can come out, come out, um the level of the schedule there's a family. So obviously, you get the schedule, you have that mask, um we try to see how to associate visits. We actually got that mark six feet out along soccer field, that's you have an area where it's easy to identify at six feet, the bleachers into the pool. Get moderate, where I have to view the features for the venue areas, the kitchen, so they can still not, not sit on top of each other, so. Just things that we're gonna really need to, eliminate, I believe, that we're making this, that opportunity to do. Looks like this is gonna start, so we fit your base, last one, end about over twenty eight, twenty nine. I think cross country, we're gonna, we're gonna go back there. The season going, so. That's what we're on, it wasn't. So so March first, would be the two weeks prior to the March, originally March fifteenth, was the first season. So they are definitely, well, that's very secret, March first, to, they are, end of the, end of April, right now, they see that's what our. Football or volleyball, cheer, so. There could be one, one game overlap, and it's basically start, even right two, the state has been, I said, and you can start spacing with the. Officials, baseball, track, softball, those guys. That will start then, and probably we will go into June. Here, if you get done, we can do for more of that, I think they can put into June now, and I think also waiting on more information about reading this scenario. With they have had to work with economy, they have got on them, they now have to go together, they have a lot of time to finish the season for that reason. So there won't be a season for baseball in the city. That is something that, I'm not sure what it's gonna look like for this summer of March, so. We gotta, that's need to start like now, I mean, we've got three games, so it's like, keep the same schedule, drive, drive, do the morning, or whatever it is, of our school that we're on, or if it's this. Two year, we may just start, we'll be doing this, now, we'll put those sections, but when your exceptional opportunities come, that's law, or if you're open to something, that's just sort of normalcy. Yes, you will be a class before, but now a couple more, but actually, it's a change right now, the class, the class. We, right now, we feel like once, these girls go back now, play two, five, no. Right now, this playing environment is, we usually play, particularly, these girls who play away, they play, they challenge each other. That was something they were, they're stuck in these, so there's nothing left up to, work the rest of the bus, um so there's not gonna be, open overlap, and that's it. These are the young kids that two days, five hours, we don't like, bar, we're waiting, Saturday morning, or the team, or something like that. It's just be something, we would have to grow volleyball, but that got moved up. We don't, I don't like not physically enough, going for that.
Have we done any kind of uh ceremony or communication with the state to see if uh this is right? This is a, I have, you know.
Uh, we have, we have, I I I saw, they have, if you, if you sign up at home, a meeting, a press statement, they'll actually, uh I'll sign out, if you're before, if you got five clear, that looks a little bit like. Right, and that numbers, numbers show that it would be okay, nothing, no, numbers, if you got a couple of gigs, two, play the ball, go now, like soccer, then you can soccer, play one for the ball, now, a lot of that is a piece of four sports. So that's a scene. So number three, I like that, based on the side of.
A question that comes out of a quick update, for the audience, to the fans who've announced this yesterday, is regardless of what, learning or alcohol, parent or parent has to have. They have to have equal access to sports and extracurricular activities when they exist, so, uh I know it's really, you know, something, something that clearly that you're, select a program, you've done that for a reason. And, you know, you have that um state school, the state has fairly proud of that, and says that if you are enrolled, that's a people, regardless of how you're receiving instruction, you're entitled to that, that is a state school. But any extracurricular, like super girl, please, should they prefer this school, um just to make sure, um you're like the best, um.
If y'all think back to that question about those kids who are full remote, if they're signing on the stores, we do have someone on our own, who are, who are like, finding the sports. Um but I want to, this is a challenge, teach you, I go play last year, if you're full remote, it's a sign, not, but that's, that's a fair, that's a, true. I want to tell that directly to the students.
And I assume that um students who are being personally, are going through a very tough, tough chat. Um they're just staying on campus and they're playing sports, so they're good, but we have a protocol, I understand, that if someone's coming, who's subject for a lot, and they show up at the school, and they need to practice, they need to. So, um, have any questions?
Correct, I have, I have, I have, I have, so, they are fully remote, the program has a little bit of a, a process, if they can stand, if they can, if they can practice starts, if they have a meeting time, every one of them, these sessions, will have a power piece that's gonna happen, literally, it's all of it.
I think it's going too early to think about what the transport might be like, so it is uh. But then, so, when do you see specifically, do you use on transport, the, the, that, after the final, transport for that, I think that's the bus, I think, this year, right?
So I, going by evidence, uh documentation, you go, based on, well, he, you know, looking at the number, bus, you know, something like that, he doesn't see them. We'd be different if he were actually going to pull, uh that's him, that's such a bus stop. So typically, Bellman is two thirty, two thirty, somewhere around there. Two forty five, two fifty, you leave the bus, you, a couple of people later, that has to go back to the bus, so. Go to the school, now, if it's close to a, 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 you might be a three that day, if it's, if it's, if it's early, we know, about these, those people, so. So I'm not sure, it's, it's getting married, probably, it's less, less, buses going out, like, that are one per day, if one, if you wait one bus on, I have to, we have to, we have to, we have to.
We have any other questions, um so we are, we feel that we have a chance to change the issue.
That's gonna be an excellent, something to help all of us.
I saw a meeting, and you got a question?
Want to, you got your word for it, and it's, yeah, work, a lot of work, the guy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm very excited for this, for this evening, for what we're on, Peter.
All right, we're gonna move right along to uh work committee report, uh Steve Black is the only.